Seven oh two. We had a little technical issue before. I'm going to call to order the special business meeting and budget workshop with the New Market School Board. We'll begin this meeting as we do all others with the pledge of allegiance. Caitlin, if you could lead us, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
One thing that we talked about a few weeks ago when we were reviewing policy is that the mission statement of the district is supposed to be right at the beginning of every meeting. And I thought that, given the fact we're going to be dealing with budgets, and I think it was important to sort of reshape the focus, what it is we're supposed to be doing in the schools. So I'll just read that tonight. "The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." As we know, we were just supposed to do the budget workshop tonight, but we received some communication from some town members with some concerning ideas and issues about the crosswalk in front of the junior senior high school. And Meredith, if you could just give us an update on where that stands. I know there's been some resolution, but if you could share it with the public, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So to recap, we talked about this issue back in June when we heard from the Department of Transportation that as a condition of approving the junior senior high school driveway permit, we would need to either remove the blinking lights at the junior senior high crosswalk, which were never permitted through the Department of Transportation, or install blinking pedestrian lights, they're called RRFBs if anyone needs to know that, at all of the crosswalks between Packers Falls and Grant Road. At the time, I approached the town administrator who confirmed there were no funds available for that, nor was there any plan in place for that work. And so with the need to move forward with the building project, we made a determination and reported to all of you that we would be removing those lights. We coordinated that removal with our Public Works Department, and Greg in Facilities supported them with that piece, and we put them in the storage. We then were working on our new school zone lights being approved, which we appropriated funds for in last fiscal year because those were no longer functioning properly. So we went through a permitting process for that. That permitting process was complete about a week ago. And once that was complete, we initiated the, we reached back out to the DOT, though Jim Minor, who was here for a while as our assistant in Facilities, had been trying to work with the DOT around solutions to the crosswalk at the junior senior high in the interim. Last week, after some feedback from community members and reports to the Town Council and legislative input, Town Administrator Sue Fornier signed off on a letter saying the town would be investigating plans to put signs, sorry, blinking lights at the other crosswalks that cross 152. That letter was submitted to the state, and the school also signed off saying it would be responsible for maintaining the walkways and taking care of meeting all of the conditions required under the DOT permit. And we were granted permission, I think last Thursday, late last Thursday, to reinstall those lights. So we're in the process of getting those reinstalled and hope to do so within the next week. And that's it in a nutshell.
Perfect. Any questions about that, anyone?
I think to add to that a little bit, I think the pole I write there is also going to receive a new brighter light on the pole.
Yeah.
LED or whatever.
And that was unrelated to the other discussion, but our Director of Public Works/Fire Chief is reinstalling a brighter LED light at the crosswalk.
I guess I haven't been down this way with the time, with the days getting shorter, but driving past the junior senior high parking lot sign, it was very well illuminated, I thought, with some good tall lights, with some good lighting in that area. So it was nice to see that because I hadn't been this time of day before, so it was nice. Any other questions about the crosswalk?
No, I'm just glad it was taken care of and we can put it to rest.
Yes. As we end that, we'll move into the budget workshop.
Doki.
My glasses, I can see.
So you all have binders.
Real quick, how much are each, do you remember at least how much each crosswalk sign was? I can't remember the price. We did.
It's about fifteen thousand dollars.
A piece, right?
Additional thirty thousand dollars to put in the other two, and that's it.
Yeah.
So in your binders is the budget overview, which is what I'm going to be walking through tonight. We have some other budget workshops scheduled for the coming weeks, and we'll hit that schedule review at the end. But as Kim alluded to, we started with the mission statement. I'm not going to reread it since we just read it, but that's how we always begin the budget. And we followed that with the budget guidelines provided by the board this year, which are to provide a rationale for budget changes, provide the tax implications, provides the class sizes of eighteen to twenty. Oh, I like to click one by one. There we go. And finally develops a budget that avoids negative impact on our schools. The proposed budget is up four hundred ninety thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. That's exclusive of the teacher contract, food service, and grants, which we will review at next week's meeting. Teacher contract, we will know once that process is complete. So that's about a two and a half percent increase over last year. Of that, about seventy-one percent remains staff, eleven percent debt service, and you can see the other smaller breakouts as a part of that, including building and equipment repairs, transportation, special ed, and SST tuition, et cetera. The next sheet is the summary slide that summarizes each function of the budget, so it's a little more clear in the handout that you have. I pasted it as a photo, which didn't come through very well, instead of a spreadsheet, from a PDF. But again, you can look at each function of the budget and see the relative increases or decreases, and we're going to walk through those in a little bit more detail. Enrollment. If you look at our eighteen nineteen, those are our October one numbers. So you can see the elementary school is at five thirty-seven, junior high at two thirty-two, and the high school at two ninety-five. And we were off about two students over what we projected the end of last, or last budget season for student enrollment. For next year, with the additional preschool classroom, we're projecting an increase of about eleven preschool students. We'll be able to add on there, which is great news for early intervention. And then you see five forty-nine at the middle school, again, ten of those coming from, or eleven of those coming from the preschool addition.
Meredith, how, do people check in with us that they're going to be enrolling their children in preschool?
We have a waitlist.
Okay.
And otherwise, they're being referred from early intervention or through screenings for special education. Yeah, we could easily fill those slots this year if we had capacity.
Yeah, just out of interest, just wondering how we can kind of see ahead like that.
Special education referrals are the bulk of that, and that's what we have to reserve our spots for. And otherwise, they're open to typical children from our community who are looking for a place to attend preschool. So contact Sherri Pahopek in our special education office if you want to get on that list. Middle school enrollment projected at two fifty-four, really that difference in class rolling up from fourth grade and class rolling up to the high school. And then high school enrollment at two ninety-five. Again, we've got a class of sixty-two that will be graduating, but only a class of sixty-seven coming in. So a difference of only five students projected there. So modest increase, putting us at one thousand one hundred and three students in our projection next year, so about forty students over this year if that pans out. Major budget changes for fiscal year twenty. Addition of the social worker position. You may remember that right now that is a position being filled by one year, for our one-year leave of absence, that we chose to fill as a social worker. The behavioral counselor is slated to return to the district next year, but at this point, we would like to retain the services of a social worker in addition. We believe those schools would benefit from having two counselors on staff with a school population of over five hundred children. The addition of the school resource officer at ninety-six thousand dollars. Again, you remember from last spring, we reduced the assistant superintendent position. That was offset by the addition of assistant principal for special support, special education support, as well as teacher leader funds. An increase to our technology replacement equipment of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which we'll go through in a bit more detail. When we look at our support staff salary scales, so again, they have step increases each year, but we've also recommended a one percent addition to the base there, as well as three percent to the administrative pool where there are no steps as part of their contracts. Health insurance, at this time, we have budgeted at ten percent. We hope to know those numbers within the next two weeks based on what we heard from school care. Transportation is up seven percent per that contract. We've also budgeted for an additional bus based on the crowding concerns we've heard at the board level. We have an additional half-time high school English teacher in the budget based on those requests for class sizes of eighteen to twenty, as well as a paraprofessional to supervise students who are participating in V-LAX courses. We have added a full-time custodian for the second half of the school year when the additional square footage will really be online, and we're going to need that support to keep our facilities at the cleaning level people expect. And our modular payment goes away next year, but we've moved that sixty thousand dollars, or fifty-nine eight oh four perhaps, to the building repair maintenance line to help with the projected roof repair that we have slated for next year of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Sorry, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which would help us to not totally deplete our capital reserve funds. Moving on, just a summary of the staffing changes. Again, the social worker position. Full-time nurse to meet special education needs, so that would be a third nurse in our schools required for, again, special educational needs. A school resource officer, a half-time English position, regular ed paraprofessional for V-LAX oversight. The half-year, but full-time custodian. We've budgeted for twelve weeks of technology support at twenty hours per week due to all the infrastructure changes that are going to be occurring this summer. We feel like we really need the support to make sure all the wiring is done and technology is in place for the start of the school year. And then, not in your operating budget, but you will see these when you look at the grants, not next week, but the following week. We've also budgeted for an additional day of speech and OT based on that preschool increase.
And those are contracted services for the most part, aren't they? Yes and no?
We'll see.
Okay.
So then moving into the function analysis, so again, this aligns with the function summary that you saw on the first page. Not first, but one of the early slides. Regular education is down about thirty thousand dollars. Again, remember that that, apart because there's no salary increases built in here, because the teacher's contract is not included. Health insurance projected at ten percent, the additional positions that I've already identified. The added days, again, that we talked about last spring for our teacher leaders, which were offset by both the elimination of the department chair stipends, as well as the assistant superintendent funds, and then some miscellaneous things like additional textbooks at the junior senior high. In special education, you see a very modest change, but it doesn't really tell the whole story. As you already heard, we have the nurse position being added. We also have an increase in our contracted services to support our elementary school autism program that Erica talked with you about last month. We've also realigned, the building coordinator position was carried in our teacher line, so we moved that into admin.
So say that again? So you're, the new assistant principal is now considered administration?
The building coordinator was always considered administration, and it was previously budgeted, though, in the teacher lines for special education. And so that was moved into administration, and you'll see the other, the counterpart of that position when we get to the administrative budget. In English language learning, down, just under twelve thousand dollars. That's really due to a change in personnel and benefit elections. And then enrichment activities, that's elementary school only. That additional eighteen hundred dollars is for artist in residence funds. Thirteen hundred is our vocational program, so that is our tuition to SST. You can see at the bottom there that the cost of SST is going down, about sixty-three dollars per student. But because our numbers at the junior senior high are going up, at the high school level are going up, we've budgeted for an additional seven students based on those percentages. So that's a little under ten thousand dollars. Department head stipends were removed again from that line. They appear now in the additional days as part of the base salary for those teacher leaders. We added some funds for our robotics teams, and athletics added a spirit team, cross-country, which was not previously budgeted, and a two percent increase for salaries. And we also are seeding the Special Olympics team in our operating budget. Previously, that was all privately funded. There are multiple twenty-one hundred lines in your function summary, so I've broken them into kind of two areas. The support services that include social work, guidance, assessment, and health, and those lines are up eighty-two thousand dollars. And again, that is largely due to the social work position being added. The second portion of the twenty-one hundreds includes our psychologists, testing, speech therapy, occupational and physical therapy. And that is down about forty-five thousand dollars, and again, that is largely due to some personnel changes and benefit selection changes. And then the last line, which appears as an other because it's a contracted service for us, we're paying the town, is the school resource officer for ninety-six thousand. Twenty-two-ten, staff development, twenty-two-twenty, library media, and twenty-two-thirty, technology, down a total of thirteen thousand dollars. Again, the assistant superintendent position was reallocated to the schools for both the school and special ed administrator, as well as the days for the teacher leader. I think I've said that four times now. And then we have an increase in course reimbursement just due to the trends that we've been seeing with our staff in terms of courses that they're taking. And the big change here is really the increase in technology replacement equipment. So again, you'll remember, we previously have been carrying a lot of those funds through our technology reserve fund. Fortunately, we have not had to deplete those funds in the last two years. So there is still some funding there, but we are due for replacement switches at the junior senior high schools to a tune of about fifty thousand dollars. Firewall upgrades are sixteen and a half thousand, and we're beginning the Chromebook replacement cycle, which should average about forty thousand dollars a year. Next, we have school board, SAU management, special ed administration. That includes superintendent office, business office, as well as our school district clerk, treasurer, et cetera. That's up a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And again, that's partly because that special ed administrator was previously budgeted as a teacher and is now in the administrator line. We also saw a reduction in teacher severance payments. We had higher payouts for our teachers retiring last fiscal, or this fiscal year than we anticipate for next year. And again, changes in personnel and employee benefit elections. School administration is the other half of the offset. So one position was moved from special ed teachers to special ed administrators. One position was assistant superintendent and is now building administrator. Those are the two special ed assistant principal roles. So you can see an increase of about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in our school administration lines, which include salary increases as well as some benefit changes. And there's a reduction there as well when you look at the detailed lines for the department chair stipends. The twenty-six hundreds are our facilities custodial budget, up ninety-nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars. So we've added the one FTE custodian, based on that additional square footage for the second half of the year only. And as I mentioned, the increase of sixty thousand dollars for building, repair, and maintenance for the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar roof at the junior senior high due to be replaced next year. And again, that's offset by the reduction of the modular payment, which we'll see in a couple minutes. Transportation, hundred thousand dollar increase there, seven percent increase for our transportation contract with her student. We've added in one additional bus at three hundred and forty dollars a day. And then that includes our special ed transportation. So we've also, though we see a decrease in our anticipated district transportation, we also see an increase in our rate there as well. Instructional support is our before-school and our lunch and recess monitors, fifteen hundred dollar increase there, really due to step increases for the staff filling those roles. Function forty-six hundred is the modular payment that is off the books for us. And fifty-two hundred is a transfer to other funds. We're proposing two thousand dollars. That's an increase of about thirteen hundred dollars based on what we saw for uncollected lunch fund balances at the end of last year. And we'll talk more about that at another meeting when we talk about food service and grants. Our debt payment is going up, and our interest payment is going down, roughly offsetting one another. Again, two point three million there, roughly. That really brings us full circle, back to this projected increase of four hundred ninety thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars, or two point four seven percent over last year's projected budget. I'll walk through your binder with you in just a minute, but upcoming meetings, as of right now, we are scheduled to meet at six o'clock next Thursday, November first. Our intent would be to review with you the elementary and junior senior high school budgets, as well as give you first revenue forecast. The tax rate was just set today, so it's hard to do that without that information. The following week, November eighth, seven PM meeting, we would look at special education, facilities, technology, SAU budget, and transportation. November fifteenth is our, again, seven PM meeting. We'd be looking at any remaining areas of concern. Get that slated for possible budget adoption. Again, teacher contract is outstanding, so these dates may shift. November nineteenth and twenty-sixth, we reserved for additional budget workshops as needed. And then at the moment, December third at seven, the budget committee is slated to take its first look at the school board budget. In fact, we have to present them one by that date, so. So also in your binder. So your first tab includes the budget summary, same sheet just in the overview presentation, as well as the budget summary by function. So you can walk through the eleven hundreds, the twelve hundreds, et cetera, to look at the detail of the budget. The third tab, sorry, second tab, is sorted by building, so you have zero for the SAU, one for the elementary school, two for the junior high, and three for the senior high. So again, you can look at each section of the budget by building. The next tab is the budget by object, so you can look at salaries altogether or health insurance altogether. And then the red tab, Al's not here, because I think it's his favorite, is the high to low sort of the budget, so you can see the major increases, go ahead, take percent increases. In tab five, I included for you our enrollment production information. In tab five, I included for you our enrollment production information, as well as summaries from each administrator. So you have the elementary proposal, the high school detail, special ed overview. Following tab includes technology and facilities detail. And your last two tabs should be empty for us to give you revenue and ultimately the default budget information.
Any questions at this overview so far? We have some reading, we have some studying to do. I'm going to have my glasses handy for the, to see these small numbers, but I think we do. I would agree. Ingrid, Elizabeth, anything for you at this point?
No.
No?
All right, so we will.
A lot to absorb.
A lot to absorb. We have a lot to absorb. We have our first, or our second sort of run-through, as Meredith said, will be next Thursday, the first, at six. And we'll have our regular business meeting after that at seven, yes ma'am?
As I say, it's helpful to us, if you have specific questions for those sections of the budget we're reviewing next week, the elementary and the junior, senior high budget, to submit those questions to us in advance. So principals can be prepared for those. It always helps conversation go smoothly, so if you have those ahead of time, that would be great.
So the next meeting after that, as will be the budget section, budget work session on the eighth, and then you guys can see the rest of the meetings for the rest of the time. As we have nothing else on the agenda, I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-thirty-one. And a motion from Mr. Kennison in a second from Ms. McKinney. We will adjour, all of us in favor of adjuring the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-one.